Yeah.
Don't have any reserve or anything else?
Um, yeah, the new handout, I'm missing uh last part of six and seven. So I just want to make sure of the whole package. This is the one and the ones you can see that page on there. Yeah, see this is not double sided, so this doesn't have it.
Was page two still okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we're in one of the three.
Oh, so you don't have to place through that.
Page two of the agenda still okay.
Okay. Alright, so I'm cleared up now for that.
I will not put as a list.
Thank you.
Day motion from Erica's secretary Bob. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor please say aye.
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 The agenda's approved, that was the consent agenda. And we have the minutes from our special meeting December first and December thirteenth. Then the approval checks, the foundation for finance committee minutes July council.
Um, real quick, Matt, can you confirm minutes from December, what's the first meeting?
December first, that was our special meeting, that was the November meeting.
So, so the reprint then has to run day to December fifth on my page. Did I say December first?
Mine's just.
Mine is December first. Well, wait a second, he's talking about the actual minutes themselves.
Oh.
Which does say December fifth. They might remember.
So I.
They might remember what the.
It was first.
It was.
It was first, okay, so I assume John, you want to amend?
Yeah, I'd like to amend, just to correct the date on the special meeting. Page December first and not December fifth.
That's page three. And we have the. Everything else look alright?
The subject could that change on June three?
Okay, motion from John. Erica. Any further discussion? All those in favor approving consent agenda as amended, please stand.
Aye.
Aye.
If you mind if we do a roll call?
Yes.
Justin, can you do a roll call?
Yes. Alright, I got Matt Altman.
Here.
And I'm Terry Clark.
Yep, here.
John Ward, here. Earl Levino.
Yes.
Paul Davis.
Here.
Julie Peterson.
Here.
Andy Olson.
Here.
Scott Olander.
Here.
Kevin Martin.
Your.
Cheryl Wardle. Don Erlecker.
Here.
Jeffy Motta. Edie Utley. Kim Maturi.
Here.
Stacy O'Leary.
Here.
Dr. Tim O'Brien.
Here.
Dr. Roberta Hoppy.
Here.
Okay. Good then. Okay. Next up on the agenda then is the time for public comments and announcements. If you'd like to make a public comment, please state your name and address. And please try to keep your comments to three minutes. And if you have a comment, remember that we don't respond to it at the meeting. Is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment? Okay, we are getting a note that we have four audio for the people. Yeah.
Well, as long as you're here, Jeff.
Were you turning off the volume, Justin? No, what's that?
Nice to see.
Can you hear us better?
That better, Rhonda?
Okay, can I just ask? Yes. Can we get the screen so we can see Ben, not necessarily us?
Can we do that as more, Justin? I don't think.
Well, you. Hi, Rhonda. Ben, I'm speaking.
Oh, right. Something about the new Zoom, it's unless you're talking, you don't necessarily see who's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it, I think it's. There's a subject for high video participants, and I wonder if that's.
Oh, I'll.
I, I prefer.
Matt's used to screaming, so he can.
I can yell.
He can carry it.
Yeah, you can do it.
So I'll just ask one more time while everybody's on, is there anybody who would like to make a public comment? Okay, hearing done, then we'll move on with the agendas. Yeah. First up, in our presentations, we have Jeff, Stacy, Leanne, Angela Bennett, talking about the phone system improvement project. This is something that the board asked for a report back.
Matt, is saying who is. You can't say it, Justin. We got it.
Okay, so whenever you guys are ready, go ahead.
Presentation up.
Okay, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, so I'm going to kick us off. My name is Leanne Boulding, and I'm the process improvement coordinator here at KVH. And tonight, we're going to talk to you about the process improvement project that I've had the pleasure of facilitating, and all the work and improvements that are being done to improve the phone system at FME. So although I will not be providing education this evening, we'll look to do that in March. I would ask that you pay attention to the concept of waste and the key element of eliminating waste in our processes through our plan, do, study, act, or adjust, which we refer to as a PDSA, to better meet the needs of our customers. So with that, I will hand it over to the project team.
Okay, so you know me, I'm Stacy O'Leary, and I'm, my role in the presentation is talking about our charter. Our project timeline is six to eight weeks, and we're focusing really at FME already. So we're working on that project. What we were hearing is long holds, calls were not being answered, repeat calls. We have a high volume of repeat calls in the clinic, delays on return, and even calls being disconnected or being disconnected while you're at hold. So we start this at the initiation of the phone call from the patient, and it stops through, the patient has been, the phone call has been resolved, and we've closed the loop. So those are our start and stop parameters for this. Excluded, so just so you know, when we start this process improvement, we always say we're going to exclude software costs, we're going to exclude any more staff. So really, the focus is improving our process with our existing software we have and the existing staff we have. Jeff and I are the executive sponsors, I'm the process owner, Jeff is the project lead, and Leanne is the facilitator. Angela is our clinic manager at FME. So expectations, what we are producing, what targets are we meeting, our outcomes we want to achieve. We want to streamline the process for the patient experience. We want to change the standard work that we're currently using. We are looking for first call resolution versus first person resolution. And really, the difference there is we know a lot of patients call in and want to speak to someone clinical. Those people don't answer that phone upfront, it's our patient service reps who do. We want to reduce the repeat return calls, and we really want to level the work throughout the PSRs at the clinic station. So this slide also is kind of our spoiler alert. We have the update, our most recent meeting was the 29th of December. The team feels that we are 75% completed on streamlining this project. Our standard work is about 80% completed. First call versus first person resolution, we feel we're at 30% on that project. But the big piece is from when we started this project, we have reduced the repeat calls by 57% from day one of this project. And then leveling our work and filling our vacant positions, we feel we're at 75%.
Got it?
Okay. Um, so my name's Angela Bennett, and I know that I've met some of you since, and maybe I haven't. So I wanted to start off by thanking the KVH board for, for helping us recognize this problem and really pick up the collaborative improvement project that, the charter that we quickly implemented and formed after hearing back from the board, the urgency of this project and the need. Having heard the concerns of our patients in the community. And so it really helped us implement improvements. Part of this pre-PDSA Plan Do Study Act was looking at and hearing the voice of our customer and the experience that they were receiving at Family Medicine, Ellensburg. Mostly related to the state of our phones. Justin, will you go? This, as you can see, it's, it's, it's been a lot of, a lot of feedback that we started with that we, that we hope to improve the patient experience. Um, in this process, we wanted to highlight that we found it wasn't just our patients who were frustrated and feeling really beat up about the phone process. I wanted to highlight, as we started this project and looked at improving our service to our customers, we are also hearing from our internal customers, which are our employees, that they were feeling just as frustrated with our phones. They were feeling a little bit beat up, they wanted it to be better. They felt like the patients misunderstood, they felt like they were taking a lot of, kind of the patient disrentalment every time that they answered the phone. And working in that type of environment for eight hours a day, like days a week, was exhausting. And so it wasn't just our patients who were impacted. So I really highlight the importance of this improvement project and the urgency to work on improving. Thank you. One thing, so as part of our pre-PDSA, we wanted to know what, what the state of the phones were. And I can tell you that FME was the only clinic in the KVH system who, who had implemented and turned on the call queuing. We had turned on that call queuing without a trial and without really doing any sort of process improvement project to understand what the downstreams effect of that call queuing would have. Um, I think it's also worth noting that we moved into our clinical space in the max, pre worry of 2020. That was one month before the whole pandemic occurred. And with that move, we also had the new phone system. So that kind of had a lot of things all at one time. Um, calls coming into the main clinic number are, were answered by an auto attendant, which gave you the menu options. One of the menu options was to go to scheduling, which rang our PSR phones. The PSR phones were all put together in what they call a multi-line hunt group. And within that group, that's where that call queuing would start. As people came in, it would ring all of the phones. If the phones, then there was at that time approximately nine phones in that group that would ring. It would ring seven times if we weren't able to pick it up. That's when the patient was placed in the call queue. They would hear hold music and be in that queue for 20 seconds. Kind of a call timer starting, and then it would try to deliver that call again. And we had wanted to note that the phones at FME are not audibly ringing. The reason for that in our space, if you haven't had a chance to come up to the clinic and look at the front desk space, there's eight phone, well, there's nine phones in that front office space with the volume of calls that we have, if they were ringing audibly continuously. You'll see in the data that we get about a phone call a minute. The level of noise in that area would be, would be pretty much uninhabitable, I think. So we do have our phones on, on silent, but I think that also adds to the perception that, that we're, the phones aren't even ringing in the clinic. So that was one thing to note. Ah, okay. So I think we also learned that, that the patient complaints and what you were hearing from, from patients, it was validated, they were, it times where the experience did long hold, that they were in the queue. And to that queue where it would eventually force them to voicemail or be disconnected. And unfortunately, that was a reality for a lot of patients. Next slide. Sorry, I'm getting a little bit. Go shake your voice, okay.
It's also really difficult to make a presentation through these masks. I do this to employ more patients.
Pre, pre-PDSA state of our staffing, just, we did have three open PSR positions, so patient service representatives that were posted. And that, and in October, so this was October, we had our lead PSR. The three PSRs who were solely dedicated to, to answering the phone. One staff member who was dedicated to collecting the voicemails and touching back to patients. Three primary PSRs who were front-facing patient-focused. And we feel really strongly that those, those patient-forward PSRs are the last line to answer the phone. We really want them to focus on that patient standing in front of them in the lobby and giving them their time and attention without being distracted by answering the phone. We also had one referral coordinator and one person who was focused on medical records. I, and we. We're busy, we're very, very busy. So having three openings did kind of put us in a deficit at that time. As of today, all of our open PSR positions are filled, and that has really helped us kind of through this project, be able to level. Some of the work of the new staff have been onboarded and are deployed into, into, into working to the clinic. Okay, so this is some of Leanne's observation, and so I'll let her talk to you a little bit about her pre-PDSA observation data.
So if we can move to the next slide, but I did, I took the opportunity to go up and do observations with the staff at FME. Specifically, the staff are dedicated to the phones and voicemails, and it's pretty incredible data. Next slide. So when you look at in a six and a half hour period, and this came directly from some logs that were pulled on the timings of phone calls and whatnot, so in a six and a half hour period, there's 390 minutes. It's what happened was 384 calls came through within 390 minutes, which is equating to a call a minute. And you had four staff available to answer phones. So really, when you look at that, that's not feasible when through observation, reality is a call can take anywhere from two minutes to 20 minutes to complete fully, as well as voicemails, the pileup of the voicemails. So voicemails were coming in continuously, of course, especially with the queuing going on, being directed directly to voicemail many, on many occasions. To return those voicemails, it doesn't take just a second to respond to a patient's needs, as you're all aware of. So it can be anywhere from one minute to 25 minutes. One of the return calls, I timed it, and it was about a, it was 27-minute return call. So that's just an example, a snapshot in time of the time that I spent up there with staff and on the volumes of these calls and the impact, and then the need to, to meet the needs of our patients. It's, it feels as though there's not enough staff or time in the day to return, let alone answer of that volume of calls coming in at that rate. Next slide. Yep. So we begin our work on improvement, and so I chose the approach of using an idea form. So through observation, I had witnessed and heard and the reality of the frustration, yes, on the patient's side for sure. Definitely on the employee side. And one of the key elements in improvement work is in, is making sure you are having the people that do the work in the room with you. And their, their voices and their ideas are being heard because they're the ones that are actually functioning through that process. So I utilized what you are seeing on your screen now is our idea form, and that is where the employee is actually going to write down the area of the problems occurring and measures taken and what results would occur or the outcomes that would take place if some of their ideas are implemented. And we actually pass these out to, I left piles of them, stacks of them within the entire PSR staff there at FME, and they all filled them out, as you will see on the next slide, and I'll hand it back over to you, Angela.
Yeah, so, so this was really where the rubber met the road as far as digging in and, and starting kicking off this project, engaging our employees. The entire PSR team filled out idea forms, and we use these idea forms to brainstorm and start drafting our action decision logs, our map of how we wanted to, to trial some improvements. With patients and employees feeling, feeling pretty beat up and sad, feeling like they, they weren't meeting their customers' needs or expectations, and that they didn't, they didn't feel good when they latched at the end of the day. Go ahead to the next slide. So we, at our first meeting, we used those forms, we started brainstorming and creating this, this plan. We crafted our action decision log and ideas to trial. The very first thing that we did was turn off our call queuing. And it is still off, but that went away the day after, well, it was supposed to go away the day after we came back from Thanksgiving, but felt like that might be not a very good day to start a trial. So we actually turned call queuing off the Tuesday after we came back from, from our Thanksgiving break. And call queuing has been turned off since then. Uh, other ideas that we did is some changes to our auto attendant. I'm trying to really get the calls to the right person. We've done, we're, two phases, we're, we're implementing and trialing phase two. Part of that is a medication refill line where patients can leave a voicemail if they have questions about their medication refills. That is answered by a medical assistant who has the ability to address that refill or take it to the provider team, so we've eliminated the, the middle man.
Was that a direct line back to the?
It goes directly into a voice mailbox. Yes.
And what about like providers calling, or is there a direct line back to the?
There is a, there is a backline phone number that we created prior to this project that is manned by the PSR team, and it's actually a mobile phone. That number is provided to the KVH departments for those direct and urgent needs from provider to provider. So what, the other thing that happened in phase two that we're, we're monitoring is that we now have an auto attendant selection for the patient to be able to have their call transferred to the billing department. We partnered with Terra Preciado in this part of the trial, where if the patient's calling and they have a question about billing, that first call resolution getting them to the right department to have their question answered. And so that, we're, we're still trialing that and looking forward to feedback on, on how that's, if that's been successful. Phase three is looking at how we can further divvy up those calls coming in so that the PSRs answering the phones are, are really the person that the patient needs to resolve their problem. So work on this continues, if you go to the next slide, please.
So Angela, can I just mention, this is one of the things I really liked when they were doing the auto attendant. They also went through and sorted the highest priority, the highest volume of calls. So if it's, if medication refills was the highest volume, that's the first option that you did in the auto attendant. So you don't have to wait all the way to H.
Yeah. Yeah, so in, in that instance, we also, so the very first option is if you're just calling to get the clinic address or fax number, which often happens for folks who are looking for where we're located or are trying to fax us records requests, that's the first option. And so you don't have to wait to the end of the call tree to, to get that option. And as you know, most of us have done this, we just push, some people just push buttons until they get, where they want to get, so. We translated that paper action decision log into an electronic version. They, so far, our formal action decision log has 28 items of improvement in just the first one and two phases. All of the items that you can kind of see that are highlighted in green are items that we checked off and are completed. Thanks, Justin. This is our current state PDSA. And so I'm going to hand this over to Jeff to talk about some of the data, what we're seeing.
Yeah. Angela, I don't know what to call about, but you have a lot of these.
Yes. I have some of my team, all of the work that they're doing. I wanted to, it's on the board meeting to be present for this presentation, so thank you for coming. What are your names?
People can do.
I'm the lead PSR for Camden, I'll send you.
I'm Cecily, I'm one of the regular PSRs.
Also involved in the, in the.
Just, just.
Tyson is also a PSR, one of our other colleagues. We, we appreciate him.
Oh, downstairs too. This is Jessica. Yeah, Jessica, thank you.
Thank you.
So basically, in the PDA process, this is the ask, this is the study. So what we're trying to do in being, you know, diligent to the process is make a change, but then also look at the data. And what you can see is what we're really trying to do is reduce the number of duplicate calls into the system. There's a line there that says a percentage of duplicates, it's normally in the, the high 40s, yeah, 40s to mid 30s. And really reducing the number of calls, so you can see the total number of calls coming in, so I'll just pick a day. There's 400, and then the unique numbers that are called, so the person only called one time, there would only be 244 calls. So that means that there was 156 calls into the system that were, that somebody calling, you know, multiple times. And so that was 39%. How many voicemails were left for the day? And we also looked at the number of calls, so callers more than five times. We had five people call more than five times. And this number here is the repeat callers. And so this one I looked at, okay, how many people called three or more times? And what was that total number of calls? So 42 people called three or more times, and that added 87 extra calls to the system. So some of the data, and then the, the max number of calls by one person, so that one person called 10 times into the system. So really crunching that data, noting where we made changes from our process and noting where they ended up, and then, and then looking at the data after that. So. So, so there's some very significant changes that have reduced the number of duplicate calls into the system. So the other thing that we did was, that's not on here, is we were also comparing this data to the data at Clealum. So family medicine, Clealum, because kind of, you know, apples to apples, except for their volume was a lot lower. At least looking at the same data through the system. So.
And to add on the percentages of duplicate calls, they're running, most of our other clinics were running around twenty percent, twenty to twenty five percent duplication calls. So we know we're not going to get that number to zero, but for FME, we'd like to get that closer to where our other clinics.
You can shift it. And then, and this is, so this is more of the detailed data. And then I just wanted to do one visual of that same data, total number of calls, how many unique calls, the duplicates and then the voicemails.
One thing that we, that we're starting as we continue our project and when we met on the twenty ninth, we said, we'd like to talk to this person that called more than five times. We have their numbers. We're involving Tony Clayton in our quality department who handles a lot of our clinic related patient concerns. And she's going to be reaching out to patients who called multiple times to really understand like their patient story and how, to understand like what experience they're having and like why they're calling in so many times so that we can continue to improve the process to help reduce that need to call in multiple times.
Some of the detailed things we're looking at now, you know, as we refine the data is days of the week. You know, obviously Monday, Tuesday seems to be high. What happens after a holiday? So this is Christmas and then this is the days after Christmas. Times of day, I was pulling that report today. So, you know, each day, so from seven AM to eight AM, how many calls? So times of day and where the volume is for, for the entire day, we're looking at data, that data too. So.
Hoping if we can identify some trends that we can practically maybe upstep for, you know, expected high call volumes or peak times so that we're still able to meet our, our customer needs.
Question on, so on that, your, the data is based on six and a half hours. Is that because you take a break during lunch or?
No, I think that was just her original observation time. The, the data that we have now is the eight hour day. So we do have staggered lunch times for our providers and for our PSR team. There is actually never a time from eight to five where the phones are turned off or that we're at lunch or that the clinic is closed.
But that, just before lunch and lunch, you know, just after lunch, probably is the peak, I would assume. I don't know.
It actually is right between eight thirty and ten o'clock in the morning is the highest peak of calls. Yeah.
Best time to call.
What's the, what's?
You know, actually, the data shows that the last hour of the day is when.
Really?
There's people calling in at one AM.
Yeah.
Into the system. So.
Angela, I think the six and a half hours, but that was based on because you take an hour off for a lunch and then.
No, I can, I can clarify the six and a half hours. So the six, the six and a half hours, that was data that was pulled during that timeframe. So within a six and a half hour timeframe, that's the volume of calls that came in and those are the available minutes. And then, so that's what that correlates to is I was sent the data directly from the phone logs themselves. And that's how many calls that came in at six and a half hours. And then from there we move to what's a full staff day look like. And so seven and a half hours, you take the half hour lunch out of there and then the volume of calls coming through. So the graphs of the data that Jeff is referencing there, I've broken it down to each day on what that would look like if you had all the, with the staff that are available for each day. So that six and a half hours truly is reflective of the volume of calls that came in within that three hundred ninety minutes. Without breaks or anything, that's just, that's just the volume of calls and what it would take to staff that.
Yeah. The initial pure data. So you had all the duplicate calls. So if you're, you can reduce your call by forty percent. You know, you can.
Well, and also, as you said, and something I heard from the PSRs is just spent first few minutes getting yelled at. Because literally because patients were so frustrated and, and that's a wonderful way to start a recall.
Yeah. And that is practically improved. We are now, you know, picking up the phone and hearing happy patients and not getting constant beratement of, you know, thank you for, oh, you finally answered your phone. It's like, yes, we, we do. We, we are trying very hard and it's very important that we answer your call. Go ahead to the next slide. Thanks, Justin. So current PDSA, we have, you know, preskeny comments. Happy to say that our preskeny comments have been minimizing as far as patient concerns and complaints about the phones. I'm hoping that as board members, you're hearing less from patients about problems with the phones. We are still continuing to work on this improvement project. We are by no means at an end. There are still things that we, that we want to trial and implement. We did hear from the quality department that since we started our PDSA, they're very appreciative that, of the process and they haven't received any complaints regarding phones since our trial started.
And our, our system is like a VoIP system and we don't have any issues with like caller ID.
Correct. Yes. Yes. So the, the phones at KPH Family Medicine are the VoIP phones, so the voice over internet phones, which is, we have those call logs which we're able to extract the data from, which is really helpful.
I've heard like glitches and not necessarily with the hospital, but people call and get texts or voice, you know.
I haven't heard any of those.
Texts because it's internet and bouncing around in different places.
I do know that there was one day in our trial where the, the internet was down and that did create create quite a problem with our phones. Yeah. It was, that was a very high call volume day and that was interesting. But I want to say as we have gone through this PDSA, our staff are feeling, they're feeling a lot better. They're, they're feeling a relief for the support and the attention. They're excited to see, to be involved in the improvement process and to see the improvement happening, happening. Through this process, they were excited to share their ideas and, and the people that are doing the work are the people that are creating the processes. They feel like we're creating more efficient processes. We're, what we're doing is starting to work as our new staff are getting onboarded and proficient that the workload is balancing out. Our patients are nicer, which means that they're happier, which means that we're doing, we're doing the right thing. And that our patients are starting to feel some more confidence in us. And the longer we do this, the more we improve, the more that we're going to be able to regain our trust. And that feels really good.
My last question. This is, of all the changes you made, what is the one change that was the biggest change?
I think the, the biggest change is removing the call queue.
Getting rid of queue.
Yeah. And at this current state, when you call the, the clinic number, the phone will ring. If we aren't on the phones and we're able, we'll answer that phone call. It rings ten times. If we, we don't have that staff available to pick up that phone, it does go to voicemail. I have dedicated staff who process that voicemail. They're in that voicemail box, pulling that voicemail off and responding back to the patient quickly. You know, we got your voicemail. We're here, we're calling you back to schedule your appointment.
Angela, are they in the clinic or are they over in the clinic?
So currently I have, I have staff that are in the clinic answering their phones, but I also have staff who are occupying some desks over in the MAC annex in the loft upstairs. They are, the staff that are over there are primarily pulling those voicemails and circling back to the patient. I've heard from them that it is very nice to be kind of in a calm, quieter environment and not be interrupted as you're trying to transcribe and pull those voicemails off and then as a team working to, to process those voicemails. And you're also not interrupted constantly. So you're able to focus on, on getting through the voicemails and prioritizing those patient concerns. And we check on them frequently and that's great. We do have our Skype.
Next one, I have to eat water.
I know in our clinic, patients will send notes through the portals. Yes. And I know a lot of patients really prefer that. Have y'all had a change in your volume of patients using the portal versus patients using the phone or about anything you haven't looked at? I haven't looked at the, the amount of patients that are using the portal, but it is something that we do promote that portal access as a, as another venue to reaching our staff and, and having your concerns in your own words. So we do have a fairly high volume of portal users, but I think when you overall look at the percentage, it's probably not even close to ten percent.
Do you still have that on? You changed the voicemail message at one point, right? To say, hey, just a reminder, we have the portal available. Or did we take that off again?
Yeah. So we, we go through different iterations and, and update that message. And so we did have a camp, a campaign where we were encouraging patients to, to talk to the representative about getting signed up for the portal. I think that's.
I think that was even before we started process improvement, before we formally went into it. It was trying, us trying to figure out how could we help without going through a formal process and stuff.
So, and I know that is a campaign that, that marketing has worked on in the past and something that will continue to keep revisiting and, and, you know, having those materials and happy to try to get people situated on the portal. But if anybody has ever met, they're, they're seventy five year old or eighty five or ninety two year old grandfather. The portal is foreign and will never be realized. So we still want to answer the phone and we still want to talk to our patients in person. And we still want that hometown feel that, that we pride ourselves in at KPH.
Question for you. As, this is all so encouraging and I love to hear it. And I think our community would too. Do we have a plan to reply with this information and let them know that changes are being made? And is there, is there like a benchmark in which we feel comfortable?
Yeah. And I think that is a, as we're improving, as we're working through the process, pulling Michelle World into our, our project and, and involving our KPH marketing department. And what message did we want to send our patient? Absolutely.
Something to really be proud of.
I think as we get closer to a point we're worried of a thirty, sixty, ninety day review, we're still making process improvements at this point. And I'd like to be able to share, this is something we've been doing now for thirty years. Can we get some feedback? Because I think there's also still the perception that nobody answers the phone. So we do want, eventually plan to share this and invite people to.
This really is my last question. So for like recall, are we doing anything like over texting that would remind people of their recall appointments so they're not calling and saying, I think I have an appointment this week, but I'm not quite sure.
Yeah. So within, within certain patients, as we schedule that appointment, have the, the option to choose if they want a reminder for that phone call. For that appointment, would you like that reminder to be a phone call or would you like that reminder to be an email or a text message? And so that is part of our scripting, but it does happen. Sometimes it doesn't happen as well as we'd like it to. Yeah.
Because that could save a lot of additional phone calls.
Yes.
You can just like force it.
And on the portal as well, if they do have a portal account, they can log in and, and see their upcoming appointments. And so that's another reason to get signed up for the portal.
In the future, we're looking at, certainly has what's called a unified communication. That will give even more robust texting communications to your patients. Yeah. So we're looking at that.
We wanted to share with you a few things that we learned through this process and possible barriers not available in our system that we have at this time. Within the queue, you, we were not able to tell the patient where they were at in the queue and how long they had to wait. The patient or caller didn't have an option to leave their number and hold their place in the queue to have their call returned. We couldn't tell how many times the patient phone call was transferred within the system. If they were transferred, how long were they at each station? So if they were transferred to the nurse, how long did they wait or how long were they on the phone with the nurse? Our voicemail system, currently we are not able to get those voicemails transcribed. It is a manual process to call in to the voicemail box and transcribe that message. I believe that has some stuff, some things to do with HIPAA and, and the way that we retrieve those messages. So that is still a manual process.
Formacy.
Yeah. Yeah. And at FME, the voicemail box is actually only tied to one, one of our phones at the PSR desks. So that one phone can track the volume of pending voicemails. But everybody else, they're just calling into the voicemail box remotely and they don't know how many messages are there pending. So we do have a cadence that we're checking that box every thirty minutes, thirty to forty five minutes. We're calling in and retrieving voicemails, but we don't know if there's fifteen or twenty five or, or forty five in there.
I believe it's. Are we doing it every fifteen minutes?
Oh, every fifteen minutes.
Because we now have a team of three.
With it, okay, great. Yeah. So with a team of three people dedicated to voicemails, we're checking that box every fifteen minutes.
That's a great one.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. And the other thing that's on this slide, but we know in healthcare, something we don't have control over is fluctuations in staffing. So as staff leave or change positions or transition to a different position within KPH, we don't have any control of, of that. And so there will always be fluctuations in staffing.
So, yeah, question.
Yeah.
Are, are those barriers there? Are, are we going to be attacking the barriers?
The barriers are really a limit with the phone company we're currently using. They're based out East. They do have a professional product. They just have not released it in Washington and didn't have plans to release it in twenty twenty three to Washington.
Okay. So we're, we're working.
So we are working with them, but it's not like we didn't purchase it. They just don't have the offer available yet.
That, I know that very top barrier, my analysis of that is, is when you call someplace and they say, oh, you're the fifth person in the home. There are five people ahead of you and this phone call may be, should be entered in blah, 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 blah time.
Yeah.
That gives you a little bit of idea of what you should be doing. It's unfortunate that, that barrier there, but it's good work that you guys have done. I think you will speed up that barriers.
Thank you. I wanted to let you know where we're headed. We're continuing this trial. We, we haven't had to stop the line and go back on any of the implementations that we've trialed. And so we're going to continue to trial new things and add, add to our system. We have a phase three that we would like to be able to initiate soon in twenty twenty three. One of the things that I'm looking at would, and I would like to have is the patient ability to, to reach a nurse or to be triaged without having to talk to a PSR and wait for the nurse. And we would, we have our next project meeting with our PSRs, Leanne, Jeff and myself and Stacy coming up on January eighteenth. If you're interested. If you're interested in being part of that meeting, we encourage you to reach out to Justin to get the details and come see the work happening in real life.
Thank you for all this work you've been doing. And thank you to the PSRs who are here. I know that you guys are the first point of contact for most of our patients.
First impression, definitely.
It's really important. Yeah. So thank you for doing that work. I know this was a really important issue for the board. And so what might be a good point to sort of revisit this and see how things are going?
Can I jump in here? So Leanne, can you just briefly tell us how many projects you're working on right now?
There are 12 projects in the queue with, let's see, I think we've got five active. So we will, go ahead.
So our thinking was, and I talked to Matt about having Leanne come and do some education on process improvement and the lean tools that we're using. At the March meeting, the idea being she would use this project as an example and update you on where we're at at the end of March as well. So it's kind of a dual meeting. Leanne gets to educate you about the work that she's doing and lean process improvement tools. At the same time, we'll catch up at where we're at with the phones.
Sounds good. That sounds good to everybody.
I also think I can include it in my board report now that you guys have a good foundation of what we're doing and how we're working through it. If I include what phase three is and where we are at 30, 60, 90 days, I think it will help. This helps you understand the process we follow.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any other questions before we? All right, thank you.
I'm going to forage.
Okay. Thank you guys for all the work. Right next up on the agenda, this is, this is something that is very important to me and to the board. We haven't had our safe catch, a board meeting for quite a while. Safe catch awards are decided on by the QI council. And you guys, as chair of the QI council, this is, you know, just amazing to hear all the work that these people are doing every, every meeting. I know that people are just blown away by what we, you know, these stories that we hear. And so it's important to the board, it's important to the QI council, I think, to recognize the work that everyone's doing. So we want to bring them back and recognize them as part of our board meeting. So let me just remind everybody what a safe catch is. A safe catch involves at least one of the following. The catch prevented an event from reaching a patient or staff member. The catch prevented pain, delays in care, unnecessary costs or workflow inefficiencies. The situation was high risk or had potential for greater patient harm, such as communication errors, surgical site infections or falls. And the catch led to frontline or just-in-time improvement. So tonight, we're going to recognize three safe catch winners that were selected among many worthy nominees. So the first award I'd like to recognize tonight is a clinical award. This is for Jim Rutter, who's joining us here. Something read by Dr. Berich, and he was nominated for using insistence and experience to ensure appropriate care. So let me read the quick description here. Jim worked together with Jim Simons to further evaluate a pediatric patient instead of relying on a radiology report alone. This led to the patient receiving prompt and appropriate workup at a higher level of care. Thank you very much. Next up, we have a non-clinical award. This is for Nicole Hilderman at RN. She's with the infection prevention and employee health. She was nominated by Amazon for identifying potential expired hand sanitizers. Nicole found an expired hand sanitizer while rounding in the orthopedic clinic. Followed up with environmental services staff and leadership to make sure it was something they were checking monthly, even if the product wasn't all used, and they were able to reinforce with staff. So thank you very much.
Kristin's not here, so she's not here.
Okay, Kristin couldn't be here tonight, unfortunately, but still I think it's important to recognize her. This was a clinical award. Kristin, a clinical award, Kristin is a lab assistant. It was nominated by Josh Pekto for this. So let me read what she, what she won the award for. It's pretty amazing. So performing bystander CPR on her break and saving a life. Kristin was on her break in the employee parking lot and she heard a yell for help from a male in distress. Kristin ran over and found the male was yelling for help for his female friend, who was unresponsive due to a fentanyl overdose for the male. Kristin immediately took control of the situation, instructed the male to pull the female from the vehicle and then immediately started CPR. The female had no noticeable vitals. Kristin performed CPR for seven minutes before EMS arrived on the scene, at which point the female had regained pulse and respiration and took the patient to our ER. Kristin's actions saved this woman's life. She deserves a safe catch award and any other award for her heroic acting.
Yeah.
So. But unfortunately, she can't be here, but I think it's really important to recognize. Thank you guys for the great work you've done.
You've done a lot of work.
And thanks to Kristin as well.
Jan's available for a photo op.
So Terry and I, as members of the QI council, would be happy to go and get our pictures with you as part of the congratulations. John, would you mind leading the meeting for another 12 minutes?
I was a word up.
Terry to sale.
Yeah, and I apologize. We usually limit this to one presentation per meeting, but Kat gave me license to do three this time. And I apologize. I am going to read from a document here. I asked to do this because I frequently tell people that I have the best job in the county. And I wanted to take a moment to use this example to tell you why I think that is. Beginning in October, health systems across country were experiencing large volumes of influenza A and RSV cases as well as an increase in the volume of COVID cases. We call this the triple demo. Hospitals were already strained, capacity was limited by ongoing staffing shortages and an inability to discharge patients due to the continuing crisis in post-ICU care nursing home facilities. A particular concern was the record number of children being hospitalized with RSV. On Friday, November 18, 2022, we received a high-level alert from the Washington Department of Health with the following information. Pediatric ER volumes remained at record high in pediatric specialty hospitals. ER volumes at pediatric hospitals were 200 to 300% of baseline with a record ER high wait times and waiting room volume. Significant increases in influenza activity in western Washington was compounding pediatric respiratory surge capacity issues. Double facilities reported record-high levels of pediatric behavioral health patients boarding, which was also worsening the issue. The KVH emergency department at the same time was experiencing record-high volume. The four highest-volume months we have ever recorded in KVH ED were September, October, November and December of 2022. Although the surge in ED was not entirely attributable to pediatric cases, we see an increase in younger patients. KVH does not typically admit pediatric patients to our inpatient unit, so we rely on our ability to transfer to specialty unit. Washington State has just 576 pediatric medical surgical beds and 115 pediatric ICU beds. By the end of November, the unit's were running at 98 and 97% of capacity, leaving between just 10 and 20 pediatric beds available on any given day. Three to five times that many children were being boarded in emergency departments at the same time. So those 10 beds were full before they were empty. On Wednesday, November 22nd, KVH stood up incident command to prepare for and respond to the pediatric surge that was being seen throughout the state. We recognized that because we did not typically care for these patients, we needed to inventory our pediatric supplies and determine what additional equipment and supplies we might need if we had to care for younger patients for an extended period of time. Stacy Button and her team, as our resident baby experts, were pressed into service with Morgan and Materials Management, Jeff Oldman, Dee Dee Utley, Nasser from Pharmacy and Vicki to identify and fill these gaps. Working with the University of Washington and the Department of Health, Michelle in our Community Relations Department and Dee Dee Utley distributed educational materials for families throughout our system. Pediatric patients requiring transfers were being held much longer than usual, but the vast majority of our pediatric patients did not require hospitalization. The key was providing an appropriate outpatient setting for pediatric patients to quickly be seen, assessed and treated so that they would not end up in our very busy emergency department. Medical staff leadership, doctors Martin and Head, together with Stacy O'Leary and her clinic leadership team, went into high gear in their efforts to care for our pediatric patients and their worried parents and families while helping to decompress our emergency department. Ten days after we initiated incident command, we were seeing pediatric patients early in the morning and late after regular clinic hours with additional providers in non-traditional spaces at the Medical Arts Center. Jesse Rasmussen and Colin Nebak, two of our newest clinic managers, had things so well organized that even Dr. His could not punch holes in their organization. So Dr. Elise Herman was unretired and joined Christie Ward and our pediatric nurse practitioner and MA Kelly Pettigrew, who somehow was helping both of them at the same time. We recruited Aaron Olander from our EMT clinic and Jose Diaz from Family Medicine Allen, to help out, and Dr. Thomas from Family Medicine Cleveland. The EDF was able to redirect our worried families away from our crowded emergency department to an appropriate outpatient facility. Throughout the surge and because of the amazing willingness of their colleagues to respond to the unprecedented needs of our community, our full-time pediatrician, doctors Young and Deb Share, were able to continue seeing their full panel of patients who had fallen way behind in their vaccinations. And we were just starting to get those patients back in the clinic and get caught up. So we didn't want to lose that momentum. So within 10 days of initiating incident command, our providers, our support folks had come together to see these patients. And it was an absolutely amazing, it was an amazing effort to watch them to see. Again, I asked Matt if I could share this information. I just cannot be prouder of the care team we have at KVH. And they were outside their comfort zones. Sick kids is not what we typically view here. So just a real appreciation for that team stepping up and volunteering to do that work. Dr. Martin, I forget to thank her, Stacy.
I think that's, that's everyone from the managers to the providers to the MAs.
Who did we have for PSR support?
They just ran it through a regular PSR staff.
Has that trend kind of gone down a little bit?
Yeah. We are seeing fewer pediatric hospitalizations. It appears, it appears at the peak probably late November, early December. We anticipate remaining in incident command for another two weeks so that we give everybody a chance to come back to school and spit on each other and lick each other's hands and brush their eyes. But statewide, we are seeing some deep compression. Transfers are still tight out of the emergency department. We have had issues both with hospital capacity and with transportation capacity. But WMCC, which you may recall is the acronym from the COVID crisis, the Washington Medical Coordination Center, activated a pediatric line. But overall, their volumes in, as of December 26th, were the highest they'd seen since January of 2022. And they had, they had the longest waitlist that they'd seen. So the volumes are coming down somewhat, but the system is still impacted. And as you already said, one of the big issues remains statewide, the inability to get patients discharged to appropriate care. And that is the systemic, you've heard me refer to it as systemic long COVID. That is the result of those who've left healthcare and staffing issues and long-term care.
It's important to, for us to be aware of all that. Thank you for that, Dr. Martin. I mean, come back though to our celebration of the inspirational work that these people did to serve the community.
And it's just amazing. There's not even a deeper up when, when Dr. Martin and Dr. His send that call out that this is what we need and what we're trying to achieve. They go, I mean, and again, Elise Herman had accidentally allowed her medical license to lapse. And even the state said, oh, no problem. We'll go ahead and reinstate it. So just a real willingness to care for the community.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Oh, great story.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We were lucky that they considered that she only had to renew rather than reapply.
And I think through December 27th, we had added 157 or 154 appointments that we have actually seen that would not have either been seen or ended up in our emergency room.
That's great. I mean, it's, you know, it's, that's access, right? That's wonderful to see. Thank you. Okay. Well, that was, thank you for those presentations. That's, I mean, all great things to hear. So that's, that's really nice. Thank you. If there's nothing else, then we'll move on to reports and dashboards. Okay, first up, that is quality. Manny Olson with the Floppy Plan and other things.
Yeah, so to me, the most important thing is we need to approve what the QI council is recommending, that the board approved the 2023 Floppy Plan. And you've all seen this before. It didn't, it didn't change. So I don't know if I can say anything more after all.
Well, you've talked about, about this a bit, but this is something that, you know, that everybody works on this and develops, develops goals for the coming year. And it's, I love how it's tied in with the strategic plan. It's reviewed by, and correct me if I'm wrong, Manny, but it's reviewed by managers, you know, and then it's reviewed by QI council, and it's reviewed by us. And there's been a lot of input, a lot of work going on to put, put this together. And then there's a lot of work to actually carry it out. But I mean, this shows a lot of work already, but it shows some really good work to come. And there's been a lot of voices going into intervening this. And yeah, you've all had a chance to look at it and review it.
Thank you for those of you providing feedback.
And so I assume, we'll obviously take a vote, but if there are any concerns or questions, yes?
I have a question on page 21.
I'm sorry, it's so tiny, Nick.
I know. It's a little reading test. I know 187. Just, I don't know how I missed this before, but it really jumped out at me. It says 2.6 million people die annually related to hospital care.
That's an estimation, right?
That's one, that's a little less than 1% of the US population. You're saying annually?
Well, I, I think that's, that's WHO, that's worldwide. That's worldwide. That's WHO.
Worldwide, okay. I'm happy if it's worldwide.
Yes. Yeah. So that was from a WHO report.
Wasn't the initial program called 100,000 Lives?
Correct.
And that was about the US?
I think it was originally like a 10,000 Lives campaign, and then they increased it to 100,000 Lives campaign. For men. So.
Thank you for that question. Any additional questions for Manny?
Where did that come from? Yeah, he's with Housewives Hospital, and the way it was analyzed was completely bogus. It was presented as though the hospital was providing all this. Not that the best, the other clients, not only. It got so much initial attention because other person gets to be given the impression that hospitals are completely, really, by mistake.
Want to avoid that as the marketing tactic.
Yeah, I mean, this is something that's, I mean, the quality departments and, I mean, all the people here are. and, I mean, all the people here are really working on it. But there are concerns about certain side infections, sepsis, and all this stuff. And so, people are working on it. We don't want to overstate the problem, obviously, but we also want to recognize this is something that's, you know, everybody, including this organization. And I've heard, as part of the Q I Council, I've heard all sorts of presentations about all the work that goes into reducing these risks. I really appreciate that work. Thank you.
It's also part of how we collect the Q I measures that are on the dashboard, right? We're not going based off of just straight mortality data, right? That would be speaking more to, right? Mortality is something we want to pay attention to, but that's not going to be what we look at as far as an indication of preventable harm per se. We're going to look at our incident reporting and see, look at all of those cases and see where we have clusters or trends or surgical site infections and see what is preventable.
Yep, that's right, that's the key for them.
Yeah. By analysis of that, or what Doctor O'Brien was talking about, it's kind of a social media type thing because people will talk about some area being a deadly place because people are doing stupid things there and they die. But at the hospital, they're not doing stupid things, but they're very sick.
Like at hospitals, it will take sicker people.
Right, and we're taking sicker people, we're trying to help them. But people put that stuff out on social media and people don't understand that it's just a goofy thing that they're saying because maybe they may have lost a person because it was a time for them to cross the select of the vibe. And so consequently, they were blaming somebody else for their loss over social media. So, anyway, that is, I appreciate you mentioning that, Doctor O'Brien.
Yeah, it's true. I mean, no one expects the quality department to keep everyone alive.
That is possible since we don't provide direct care.
Right, prevent, let's try to prevent, prevent for.
In 2016, Johns Hopkins reported that, I knew I had just somewhere until I tried to find a reliable source, that medical errors are the third leading cause of death in the U.S. Obviously, care is going to differ depending on the commitment of the people providing it to reduce hospital harm, which is what we're doing here. So, I think it's really important that we recognize that that risk is there and that we're absolutely taking measures to prevent it, so.
Yeah, thank you, Erica. Yeah, that's, I remembered that. It's really good to remember that.
Culture is a big part of it and report it from the safety part. Like, we had talked about it at the board retreat, all of that patient safety culture. So that was really what we're trying to get to in that.
That's a big part of it, recognizing.
So, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and all the work that goes into carrying these out over the years. Did you want to make a motion?
Absolutely. I am very appreciative of the efforts. It's just tremendous, the amount of detail and thoughtfulness that's gone into this. And so I moved to a pretty healthy Quapi or, I don't know, 2023 Quapi, is that what I'm reading? Yeah?
All right, second from Terry. Motion from Erica, second, Terry. Any further discussion or questions?
Yeah, I mean, like the safe catch award, catching like the cancer type of stuff. So, it seems like not a big deal, but that could be a big deal for us. This is what Quapi is about.
Well, yeah, and one of the other things, I won't go into any detail here, but all the people are nominated. We heard a nominee this time who suggested, I guess, or got someone to do a formal cancer screening that had been left behind. And because of that, someone was able to catch something early enough.
Wow.
There's all sorts of great stuff that's gone, even, you know, beyond the people who win, all stuff that's going on beyond the scenes.
That's not preventing error. That's, it's not to prevent it. Yeah, it's tremendous.
So, all of our Safe Catch nominees get a letter to them and to their supervisor too, so that can go in their file. Those stories are all on the internet. And so I encourage you to go look at the rest of the story. It is very difficult to pick our winners. And we try to post them in the hallway too. And marketing is helping us promote the stories more as well so that more people are hearing about those stories. And that's a annual recognition statement. That was part of really highlighting the preventative work and recognizing folks. And that's also part of, right, making K V H a great place to work, right? If you feel like you're recognized and the work you're doing is meaningful, it can make a big difference about whether you choose to work there or not.
Okay, so we have a motion for Erica. And a second from Terry. All is in favor of approving the Quapi Plan for 2023, please stay on.
Aye.
All right. Okay, thank you very much, Manny, for this. Now, other, you know, Manny also has other things in her report. Manny, is there anything you want to call our attention to? Or just a solicit question?
And I have, yeah, I thought I had put in words after that. I apologize, but the Q I Council dashboard will change in 2023. You won't see that probably until the March board meeting because we will finish out these metrics through December. So, in the coming months, though, you will see new metrics on the Q I Council dashboard. There are just a few changes. Some of them are processes that are pretty stable, like the median times of C T or M R I. We're going to go ahead and take that off of the dashboard. That doesn't mean we're not measuring it. We are measuring over 150 things all the time and monitoring them and working on them. But the things that are, we don't feel like it needs to be at the board every month. Certainly, you can have access to that information if you'd like to see it, but they want to change that metric to the C P A timing for stroke. Now, let's see.
Just to be clear, when you say they want to change it, this is another one of those things where you get input from the providers, Q I Council, as I say, and a lot of people. Manny, do you want to say something like how we decide on which ones get to the board?
Yeah, so when the timberish directors look at their Quapi plans that have here, how they're doing volume metrics, other measures of quality or operations metrics that they're doing, and they propose those Quapi measures initially, they also are looking at, well, how would I measure this? What should I be doing to see my progress towards this Quapi plan? And then they also say, where would I report this? How would I share this with staff or anyone? And should it be reported to the board in some way? And if so, how? So that's the first way that kind of draft of these measures gets initiated. Additionally, me and my team look through all of the measures that we measure from quality. Now, that's not everything the whole organization measures, but what we look at is quality. And we say, well, these are national standards or these are things that are highlighted in Washington State. These are measures that CMS basically requires or the Department of Health requires or R C W requires. Or this is a payer quality improvement program. You know, it may be something that's less important to us. But we use a whole prioritization system to then say, this is something that we think is valuable for you to look at every month or not. And then that goes to Q I Council to have a little bit of more discussion about that to make sure that our Q I Council board representatives agree. And then we change that in the coming year.
Yeah, the board has to say in this, I mean, obviously, if you guys have any specific requests, but Terry and I on the Q I Council, we've heard the arguments for these adjustments to the dashboard. Anything else you want to call our attention to before I ask if anyone has questions for you?
Just, we will be adding a few measures specifically for the clinics in the next year. But they still want to keep the Medicare wellness and the referral metrics. So, clinics are really boosting their metrics. And then there are just maybe some ways we're going to be breaking out the data a little bit differently so that you can, like with hospital-acquired infections, see which ones are surgical site infections versus with a catheter-acquired infection. That was the most of one.
Okay. And, you know, to kind of understand how the Q I Council discussed the thing, if you look at page 38, in the middle segment of the topic, there's workplace violence events. We've discussed that at our board meetings a few times. And, you know, it's gone down to point three over 100. And we discuss sometimes whether these are workplace violence events or it's happening from a patient to a, you know, an employee or whether it's between employee and employee. So, you know, those are kind of things that are kind of interesting to do it out. Whether it's a verbal workplace violence event or whether it's a physical workplace violence event, we talk about those at the Q I Council. And then if it's something that's very important, it could come to this meeting. But I just want you to understand the depth of the analysis that we do at the Q I Council about these things. And Manny does a wonderful job with the information that she's able to do for us.
Thank you, Terry. You guys have any questions for Manny about her report, about anything else? All right. Thank you very much, Manny. That Quapi Plan, I know it takes a lot of work.
Thanks for putting that coffee down.
Yeah.
Well, it's really, it's the whole leadership team.
Oh, really? No. It's a lot of work from Manny Olson. So, it is a huge...
Very proud of it, though. I think it's a very good plan.
And she does such a great job since the board directed us to really align the Quapi strategy. She does a wonderful job of tapping those, making sure that it's all aligned. So, I think it's a tremendous task, I mean.
It is great. Yeah, I don't remember how long ago it was, but not too many years ago, it wasn't specifically tied into our strategy. So, it's really nice to see that. It shows the effectiveness of the strategic plan and buy-in from the organization. So, we appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, next up, the CEO reports for you.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to add. I feel like there's a lot of really big news in here. Doctor Merritt, and I don't want to steal Doctor Martin's thunder, but his contract is up in April. So, we had a chance to talk to him. He went away on vacation and decided that he liked vacations. I'm not sure if I think that's great. So, he will be leaving. We're working on a communication plan and transition plan anticipating that when his contract ends on April 30th, that they'll ride off into the sunset. A lot of opportunity to celebrate the great work that he's done and the work that he's provided to the community and really being such a gable provider. And there was just a lot going on in that program. And part-time providers and community providers, a lot going on. Another thing you hear me say a lot is it's really good to be a guest. And if you read the list of things that are going on in the region, you can see that. Yakima Memorial has had almost a complete turnover in their C suite. Multicare is bringing in a team and doing a national search for the CEO there. I understand the interim person is the facilities person out of Multicare on the West Side. Memorial also, just because we feel really sorry for Memorial. Had a major water break and flooded their O Rs on Central Cyril. And it was just terrible. So, you know, again, due to pandemic, we have learned to be receiving hospitals, well, for Shandspring Hospital. But we reached out to Memorial to see how we could help them. Toponish was going to exit the OB business in an orderly fashion. And then they could no longer staff their, you know, nurses. So, they essentially woke up one day and said, we're out of OB. So, I reached out to the history of the, first of all, say, heads up, it was a nice. And they just have so much going on there. And, but one of the things that came to light through this, we had also heard that the hospital in Forks was going out of the OB business. So, I started picking through the Department of Health data and was really alarmed at the number of community hospitals that have gone out of the OB business. I'm glad Doctor Dawson's here. We are the sixth smallest OB program in the state. Places like Forks was delivering about 45 to 50 babies a year. Women, which is in Colfath, is now the smallest program at about 70 babies a year. So, I put all this data together and started calling CEOs and saying, how are you doing this? And a lot of these hospitals have quietly gone out of the business. They didn't want to make an announcement of it. But one common thread through all the folks that, like us, are delivering fewer than 400 babies a year is that this, they, OB is foundational. It's fundamental to what they consider their service to the community. And they're cobbling it together. It's, in some cases, there's a lot of F T O Bs that are doing the deliveries, but keeping the nursing skills up is really, really difficult. In other places, there's one OB in the community and they do what they can to shelter the OB. But, you know, basically, when the OB's out of town, they're out of the OB business. So, we're starting to pull together this group of CEOs who are struggling with the lower-volume OB programs and committed to keeping the surface. And we are currently, Doctor Dawson leads our OB program. We're down to two full-time OBs. And 15 days, a month of call is not doable, let alone sustainable. And you turn around the next morning and see 20 patients in clinics. So, we've got a lot of work to do in ensuring that we have a sustainable OB program.
So, is there opportunities there? Or is that just overwhelming to think of opportunities to, right? For people up here.
So, like, one of the things that I found in this is we deliver about 80% of the babies in Tidditas County that are Tidditas County district. We deliberately, and jump in and correct anything I did terribly wrong. You see, our two primary other facilities are the University of Washington or Yakima. So, those feel like deliberate, high-risk referrals. We don't do high-risk deliveries. There's some Issaquah suite from...
Of course, the hospital was taking some.
Yeah, so, there's not, but the problem is, we have a very large percentage of the market. And that 400 deliveries in Tidditas County every year hasn't changed forever. I mean, it's... So, I, we redeliver between 300 and 300. So, they're former babies-ish every year during the county.
I see, it's every county.
The difference between us and Mason.
It's a baby count.
The difference between us and Mason is basically the opportunity to capture another 200 deliveries. When I was at Crosser, we were delivering about 300 babies a year. And we built out our labor and delivery suites and deliberately went after the sunny-side market. And they're now delivering about 550 a year. So, that's going to be tougher for us. Growing that, the actual births that are available to is going to be tougher unless we get credit for it on the F M market.
I would say part of the F M market is coming up to us. But the problem we have right now is access even in the office. We're only having two providers, having a near-retirement G Y M bubble and having a part-time nurse practitioner, midwife in the office. We just, we don't have places to put the patients that we have right now. So, and then like today, today's a prime example. I had to come over at 11 o'clock. I've got two inductions going. Ended up taking one to a C-section. Then I had another labor patient walk in, and then the baby needed resuscitation. So, it just, it snowballed this afternoon. So, all of my afternoon patients, I have to reschedule them somewhere else. So, we have access problems already. And then while more over working, it creates more access problems. Sometimes it's still a bad effect. One thing that hopefully we're picking up from the Toponish area is there's two excellent providers that have an office in Yakima. We probably won't be able to pull them as employed providers, but I'm hoping that Shannon and everybody is working on contracting to get them as local providers to help cover some of those calls, so we're not dying. So, hopefully, we're working on that. We have a locals provider that's coming that we're working on. That's my comment.
So... For an entire quarter, so we should get a little bit of breathing space. It's worth mentioning, Doctor Solano was here until about December. Was that on that gap delay?
So, she was gone for six weeks for a medical issue of her own. And then she came back for a couple of weeks in the office, but was not able to take call. And then she decided to practice elsewhere as of the 31st of December. So, and Doctor Casey decided...
Of December, next month.
This isn't right. And Dr. Casey, in the fall, decided that he wanted to focus his practice more on his, not going to be a pain practice and his speeds practice. And so he has come out of delivering and is upstairs working very diligently in the handle practice group. So we're essentially down two from where we were previously. And you go on the bench.
So in addition to the doctors from Top Inish, we're in conversation with local locums, exploiting some personal relationships of Dr. Dawson and Dr. Longo. But we're also in conversation with providers from some of the hospitals that until recently were doing OB and aren't. At least one of those looks like it may be a potential permanent hire rather than a locum. As long as she can get over her Twilight Phantom. But with this, internal medicine and OB are the two highest recruiting priorities we have. And it's a good opportunity to call out the work that Catherine has done. As she's learning the position, I feel like she's a probationary firefighter, single-handedly working a three-hour fire as she's learning the job. She's dealing with a level of urgency and chaos that is frankly unprecedented, at least in my opinion with your institution.
Can we approach the Forks?
That's the one you're talking about.
Not a fourteen-year-old girl.
Let me get a couple more comments about the twenty percent of the patients that are leaving out of the county or losing out of the county. We are technically, by criteria, according to ACOG, with what we have available, we are a level-one facility for labor and delivery. Because we do not have a twenty-four-hour anesthesia, we don't have the anesthesia, the anesthesiologist. And there's, we don't have MFM. So we are technically a level-one facility. We often run like a level-two facility. And so we do a higher rate of high-risk deliveries than the level-one facilities. And so with that, there are things that, that we can't, as an organization or as a complex as a hospital handle. We do not have interventional radiology for uterine artery enhalizations. We do not have urology. We do not have all of the in-house backup to be able to deal with probably that additional twenty percent.
Right.
The other thing that just came to my attention relative to the OB volumes is after several years of record growth, the most recent numbers is that the population of Tiddit House County has been contracting for the last two years. And the twenty-two, twenty-two us, that is, so we're down to about forty-five thousand, whereas we've been pushing fifty. So expecting growth in the near term, there's a lot of building going on, but there's not a lot of population change yet.
So it's more about maintaining the stability of a program to deal with the volumes that we're doing than expecting growth. We have growth potential in GYN aspects of women's healthcare, which is a whole other panel worms a little bit. But I think it's just really trying to sustain a program of providers and staff to maintain what we have in that way.
Well, that's, I mean, we appreciate the update and understand the challenges. We're glad that you guys are doing your best to sort of maintain that and face those challenges. Obviously, I think, I mean, we appreciate the transparency about this issue. If you were going to make any sudden movements, just let us.
There's no question. We'll let us know when the waters rise. The community and the board wants OB here, you know, I mean, they're just.
What I would ask is that we give our, in order to really work this problem, we're going to have to be able to talk about this openly and candidly while assuring the staff and the community that we're committed to an OB program. You know, and to not talk about it in a public meeting isn't going to help us solve the problem. So you're going to hear a lot about OB in the coming year. And I, I hope in the next couple of months, right now, I wouldn't put a ten-foot pole at one of our OB GYNs for a meeting. But we need to start talking about what the options for the models might look like. And I am learning a lot from other CEOs about how they're doing this. So again, I was surprised by the number of hospitals that have gone out of business. But things like a fundamental gap in service providing.
Well, I appreciate, I mean, I'm glad, sorry, but I'm glad to get that, where you said that.
One other thing that I wanted, I'll try and hold right away on, Dr. Dawson mentioned that we don't have MFM. MFM is for fetal medicine, which is a higher level, higher complexity, sicker mom, potentially sicker baby. Historically, we've been able to, you know, refer patients to Memorial for that service. They're no longer in that business.
Now it's Seattle.
It's Seattle, it's Ridge One or it's.
So.
And in Seattle, is it, do they helicopter them over to Seattle or?
So we try to identify these moms early in male care and start MFM evaluation and home management earlier rather than trying to make that decision at delivery.
Yeah.
So it's a lot of patient driving, really, unfortunately. What, and she doesn't have one? No?
That's great.
I don't know if my fellow commissioners hear this for obvious reasons, but I hear it a lot from my friends. None of them come to see you guys and it's always rave reviews about the care they're getting. So thank you very much.
It always has, has been like the jewel, right? I mean, the staff, the thing that we do really well, OB.
Yeah, I hope, but the state doesn't think we're becoming an OB specialist hospital. That would be quite something.
I don't think we're there.
I don't think we're made for that now.
One other thing to point out is that just across the state, we have a vast shortage of OB GYN positions. There's about forty open positions right now from the state of Washington for full-time OB positions. Even in other states like Oregon or Oklahoma or Montana, they're, you know, running at the five to ten open positions. And so I don't know what it is about Washington that that's out there. But just to be aware of that fact and nothing with it is, is especially, you know, that, you know, we're, we're not the only people in Washington in this, though. But I think you already pointed that out. And rural healthcare is different. And not all OB GYNs are willing to work in rural healthcare just because it is vastly different.
Lots of challenges.
Like I said, it's good to be, yes, but.
Catherine's on it. Okay, any other questions for Julie?
Is this something we're going to put on a future agenda? Is we educating ourselves about choices and solutions?
I, I think we have a conversation on financial sustainability that we're going to look at. I asked Tricia, she's just back from some, she's going to be working on some modeling for us as well. Again, we've got to look at something that's sustainable.
And I imagine that we'll have, we won't need to schedule a specific thing because there'll be regular updates from Julie.
Can, can you tell us more about the shift from temporary labor, how that transition is looking?
Um, that, you know, Scott's going to talk about that in the budget overview a little bit. But that is the, the theme of this budget. We heard the board say that we want to be the employer towards investing the people that are here. So we are, are tapping the brakes on temporary labor. We were pretty much, if you can find them, get them in here, our staff needs a break. We have really high volumes in these places. But because of the programs and improved benefits, the comp program that Mandy has put in place and some of the other work we've done around the organization, we really are having some good life planning. So investing in the, the people that we're going to keep here, and even if there's some short-term pain, we're going to have to pull back those two hundred dollars now in order to do that. So is the goal zero? No, it, it, the goal might be zero, but we don't think that that's a key value. And there are programs that we are specifically, Ron and I were talking about one, oh, fun. Today, our vascular ultrasound program, we think is best served through a purchase service. Okay, rather than an individual. But, but we very deliberately opened the tap on that temporary labor. These folks were exhausted, didn't come back to the woman, and we are definitely pulling that back.
Okay, there's also a report from Amanda here. Amanda, thank you for preparing that. Are there any questions for Amanda of her report?
I'm really happy that we have that median average on trying to fill. I remember looking at that recently thinking, well, maybe that's just, seems a little redundant these days. But the difference there is striking right now.
Yeah, so unfortunately, those metrics can be a little outlier because of the fact that if we've had a position open a very long time, that's going to skew those metrics once we finally fill it, which is a good thing. So we have had some actually long-term RN positions and some other positions that we've had success filling, as Julie mentioned. So that's going to actually show a higher time to fill when we've been waiting and waiting and waiting for those positions to be filled. I'll also add that we've had some recent success converting traveling staff to KBH. And there's been some incredible stories shared where those traveling staff have shared with the manager and, and their peers in the departments of how great a KBH is a place to work. And some of them say, I wish I could stay here. I wish I could move to KBH, but I'm not able to. But we've recently been able to convert that. Just one more comment is that we actually have our first candidate that we're considering an offer for, for our international nursing contract as well, which is really exciting and really good candidate. But we have some logistics and timing and just pay contracting issues we're still working through with that. And so we're, we're in discussion there.
When you say we have ten volunteers on staff, is that like older volunteers? Or we tap into like the university volunteers?
Actually, Kyle has done, this is something I'm really excited about, is, you know, getting us to think creatively about where volunteers can, can help support our staff. They are not intended to replace our staff or our staffing position. So it's not really tied to our openings. But we've had some incredible kind of experienced student, kind of people who are interested in different healthcare careers. You know, we actually have an ER position now, a volunteer position, which has been great, that we're hoping to kind of help with training with some, just with some, you know, helping with, with flow and things like that. And being additional eyes when we do need some additional support for some of our patients. We've, we've tried it at the MAC, we've had some information desk at the MAC. And then we've had a new volunteer actually up in Clealum that started this week as well. So Kyle has done a fantastic job of thinking creatively. And, you know, a big portion of our volunteer workforce used to be the gift shop before. And we're trying to keep those folks engaged, but also tap into other folks that can help us in other ways.
Yeah, I mean, like the pre-med club of the university.
Yeah.
Good source of, you know, just having to do something, right?
Definitely.
Let them know what they're getting into.
Yeah.
Okay, there's nothing else?
So the pet therapy, should we require pets come be approved by the board?
Yeah, so at every meeting, we'll interview the pets.
They turned down my dog, just for the record.
So.
I'd love to hear updates on that.
Cause there used to be a provider that had pets in her clinic. It was, some people loved it and some people thought it was the weirdest thing ever.
This is a well-managed program.
Okay, good, good, good.
Yeah.
Infection control, things involve a lot.
How many types of pets will there be? Dogs, horses, or poeys, or rabbits?
Dogs, dogs at this time. And we're working with a company called Pet Partners. And they handle a lot of the training, the licensing, the, the kind of recruitment and outreach. But we, we had an announcement on Facebook, you may have seen it. And we got nineteen people who were interested in helping us here at KBH with that. So we're really excited and we're kind of going through those applications. And, and again, thanks to Mandy's team, as she mentioned, we're working through to make sure it's a safe and organized program.
Good.
That's great.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda. Next up, the operations report, Vicki.
My report starts on forty-four, page forty-four. Wrote this quite a while ago, I don't know my patients. Not much has happened since, except we've been taking care of a lot of patients. And CCU has been record full for long, right? Trying to work in surgeries. Couple of times we've had to rearrange surgical, elective surgeries just till we, till we had a bed. So really busy on the recruitment staffing piece, that's much, much better. I think ER only has a one part-time RN position open. Jeff has one full-time person on MedSurg CCU. OB has no postings.
I think we have a point seven.
That's pending.
Excellent.
So, no, she's, all her core staff is there. So we, we're feeling good about that. The, the pinch point is OR. We have four traveling OR nurses. We cannot seem to see an application from OR nurses. Probably in, what, fifteen months.
And the OR had a all-time record high of volumes.
So that, that's our sticky area where we, we do have an opportunity to train new nurses. It takes nine months to a year to train an OR nurse because we do everything. You know, from gynae to ortho to basket, they have to do everything.
How many OR nurses total? What, what is our full complement if we were fully staffed?
I don't know the exact number.
Would we be doing ORs necessarily to the degree or we have our own?
Well, that's a problem because all travelers come, you know, with specialty areas. There are some that are good teachers. There are some that you just, you just want your own staff to teach your own staff how to do things. Historically, we don't use travelers to train OR nurses.
Yeah, I'm here. Memorial stopped doing cataract surgery.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
What about? Yeah.
Nobody else, Amy, Chris.
They didn't.
No.
Both with cataracts in Yakima or the, the.
The Atlas Center.
They're very, yeah, hospice, yeah.
We have been seeing a large, not a large, but increased number of folks from Yakima County during their upper end endoscopy.
Yeah.
Question about food services. It seems that you're frequently looking for staff. I think that.
Who's this? I'm sorry.
Food services.
Oh, yes.
And I imagine that maybe the staff are finding other positions in the organization or.
Both are internal openings. It's up to your cooks. Usually they start as diet aids and then they work up to cooks. Sometimes they're central students, part-time employees. We do have a lot of long-term employees still in that department that have been there for ten, fifteen years, so.
How do they cover when there's these, these gaps in staff?
Well, Jim just told me today, he was in every weekend for the last two.
Oh.
So we reach out to, since they're youngsters, we have to go through, you know, process when we're replacing people. We do ask other employees and put them out for bid, shifts up for bid and picking up overtime. We always approve overtime when we can just to get people in. It is, it is a challenge, much like it is with the clinical areas when people are out, they're on family leave to find replacements. Because we can't, we do not mandate or enforce mandatory overtime.
And then this, the remodel, the equipment, is Sally, one of those pieces of equipment?
Yeah, I don't think she's, I think that's off.
Isn't it really?
The business would be coming.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, good thing that that happened before we had Sally. We had no idea. It was a good idea, but maybe someday.
Yeah, I was still having issues with supplies and certain food items and everything. Like I was, I have that flavored creamer, but my coffee, right? Well, that is not.
I'm so sorry.
Brought my own from home, but, you know, it's just not consistent with the, the supplies yet. So that's continual, continual hunt. A lot of education going on. We had a wonderful case, there was a, should hear about our casemaker, success story, story, and Dr. Hobbie can tell us about, but we were able to put in a temporary internal casemaker, vascular casemaker and send a patient out for their care. He was sent to Sacred Heart. It happened in our emergency room department, so that was pretty, pretty cool. So we're, we're keeping up education staff, both in the OR, ER, and the ICU.
Okay. Thank you very much for your. All right, next up, we've run the whole, and Rhonda, congratulations on your appointments to the ground ambulance patient billing committee. It was a nice story in the paper too about you, so.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate that. I'll be calling on all of you for your wisdom to help me make some progress with this committee. So my report is on page 47, and I do have a, a good update on rehab services, actually a couple of them. I was able to hire a, a patient service representative to replace Danielle Wilder. So Danielle had been with us for as long as we've been providing P T up there. So it was a hard to lose her, but I'm very happy to have Bailey in her place. And she was able to get started with us on January 3rd. So just this week was her, her first day with us. And then we also have hired a physical therapist with Rehab Visions who is able to do pelvic floor rehab. Where we haven't really released the word on that yet, to my knowledge, because we're trying to, we know how overwhelming the growth in this program will be, but that's really exciting. Right now, the only physical therapist in Kidittas County that provides that is with Tamarack Physical Therapy, and she has closed her patients and isn't accepting new ones for a year because she's so overwhelmed with the amount of work she has. So I'm really excited that we're going to be able to offer that again in Ellensburg. Some unfortunate news to add to the report is I was on vacation, I, on December 26th, I think, is when Katie called me and told me that we had, our temperature was out of range in the lab and we had lost some lab reagents, about, I think it's about $85,000 worth of reagents because the temperature was too high. And unfortunately, we didn't have an alarm tied into our system monitoring and engineering like we thought that we did. So the staff didn't catch that until it was too late to, to save those reagents. But I am very happy that we have found the problem and that we know now what we need to be doing to correct it. So other than that, I don't have any updates unless you have questions for me.
Any questions, Veronica?
Yes.
Dr. Dawson.
When can I start sending referrals?
You can start now, just, just be kind. Overwhelming.
Dr. Dawson let me know that there are a couple providers that Canyon View can't get in there for more than a year.
Okay, I hadn't Canyon, had one.
Okay, thank you very much, Veronica.
Thank you.
Next up, Stacy Ollea.
So my report is on page 48. I have nothing additional to add, but I'm open to answer any question.
Any questions for Stacy? Your own report?
Thanks again for all the work on the telephone stuff.
It's been exciting for staff to work through and see the progress. So I'm really, really impressed with the process improvement.
Yeah, it'd be beautiful for yourself to go to that meeting.
I would.
Do you know about what's happening?
Let me look.
It'd be crazy for you to see that.
And they know that Trump is there and that's causing.
No, we, we. Yeah, with Justin and we'll get you. Okay, 9:30 in the morning, 9:30 to 12.
Where is it located?
It will be in the MAC Amex Building. There's a conference room right there. But if you guys attend, we may have to look at moving here in the conference room. So let me look at another seats we have, because we usually fill the conference room over there. So we might need to.
It's assumed to move here.
So if you, if you'd like to go, please just notify, what's the date?
It is Wednesday, January 18th.
Would you send us invitations?
And then we can update the room to the conference room. I think Angela was nervous tonight, she's going to have. She's doing a great job presenting, she's so excited.
Would it be, be for the staff if we moved to this room?
No, we can, we can make it over. It's not that big a video.
Let's know if there's room over there.
We can also, yeah, but it's more important, I think, to get a person in the group.
Where was it going to be held initially?
It is the MAC Amex Building, so it's the old hang.
Would it have been held just in the lobby?
In the conference room. You spent. There is room in the lobby, we couldn't.
Yeah, let's see how many people can, can make it.
Okay.
And then, I'm out of town, so. Yeah, so, you know, you may be able to fit, maybe not. Anyway, so I think once.
It's flexible in that building.
It'll be, yeah.
Okay.
Right. Thank you. Yes.
Can you refresh me dermatology, is that where the sink water leaked?
That is where the sink water leaked, kept them. And when they were looking at it, they couldn't get into room one and two at the time because we were having patients. So as they worked through rooms three and four, they were finally able to get into the room. We observed mold in room one, and there is concern about room two. So those rooms will be put out of use next week, I think it is, January 9th. And Julia Reel is out again, so it really should not impact. We're not rescheduling any patients because we're losing two rooms.
That's awesome, thank you.
All right, thanks very much, Stacy.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have medical staff.
Mr. Martin?
So at this time, this is Dr. O'Brien's last board meeting as chief of staff. A rule he's held for 10 and a half years, succeeding Dr. Robert Johnson. It's estimated that in that time, you've attended 126 board meetings, 127 med exec committee meetings, probably a similar number of peer review and quality meetings. You've marshaled three revisions of medical staff bylaws, presented 371 providers for initial appointment, presented 742 providers for reappointment, and there's some controversy as to whether during that time you go one phone or two. I thought I remembered that you were forced to accept a new phone a year or so ago.
No.
Seventeen, seventeen dollar phone.
How many cookies is that?
Julie has an estimate.
Wait, what? Where did I just?
No, this is just for me, 756.
Y'all want some milk?
So it's, some, some board related facts. Since his, since his appointment by the medical staff, this physician, he's had to manage six board chairs, 15 hospital commissioners, five medical staff coordinators, two chief medical officers, two CEOs. That's pretty good.
Yeah, it's been great and fun. Oh, really, you know, it started as a fragmented operation, it's just a small hospital. It's an organization with fantastic people.
And you've had a great influence on it, so thank you.
I just tried to stay out of the way.
I think Dr. Hobbie has some.
And on behalf of K V H staff, I'd like to present you this appreciation award for 10 years plus service. And so we're hoping.
So can I, I keep you guys up there with that? With the board around you? The first time in a long time, it's blown, taken a picture of something other than my dog.
Did you want the board or just?
The board and Dr. Hotti and Dr. Martin.
We sold them like sideways. Are you sure later?
Mr. Martin.
Pretty good.
Crazy.
He knows Dr. Hobbie is great.
Are we ready?
He's one of the providers.
Yeah. Yeah, ready?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
It's all right. Wonderful, thank you. We've been most fortunate, Dr. O'Brien. No pressure, Dr. Hobbie.
Yeah, we can't really thank you enough, Dr. O'Brien.
I appreciate, appreciate. I wanted to present these cases out because they were reviewed by me in December. But they credentially. For new appointments. New appointments. It's wrong to do those on the floor. So we have to land that, if you approve this.
Yeah, me too. I've approved the medical community recommendations for this talk.
Second, right, both by John, second by Bob. Any further discussion? I think we can blow up here with this. All is in favor of approving these appointments and reappointments, we say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's what you have to do at these places.
Dr. Hobbie, do you have anything you'd like to say before we move on to Dr. Martin?
No, I think I'm good.
All right, well, welcome, I'm welcome, we're looking forward to working with you.
Absolutely.
Hi, Dr. Martin?
My report begins on page 50. One update, since this went to press under provider recruitment, the provider that we interviewed for workplace health has accepted the position. And since it's an internal hire who is already privileged and credentialed, and the end is right on the contract, and we don't have to deal with A R processes, Dr. Frick will be looking for an emergency department to replace him. And we are delighted to be able to offer him a place in your organization. Other than that, my report's before you. You've already heard my doom and gloom for the month, so I'll take any questions.
The E M T surgeon who is starting, is that an employee or a locum?
That'll be an employee, Dr. Dawson.
Dr. Anderson started.
Dr. Anderson started in, it's these, after I wrote this, but before we met, she started these days.
Any other questions for Dr. Martin?
Is, is recruiting, I don't want to use the word getting easier, but do you see any sense of anything different the last few months as we transition out of peak impossible to find anybody to?
So this is a good ti, a good time of year for recruiting in general, especially for new docs. They typically start interviewing in autumn and hope to have something landed by February. We actually have one family doc who is interested in a position that, that won't complete residency until summer 24, which is nice for him, it gives him some security. But it depends on the physician. We are still having a lot of difficulty finding internal medicine candidates. When I find the herd of shiny new friends, I'll know where to look for psychiatrists. Family docs, we do fairly well with. Maybe stop tuning there for, to use family docs to back up some of the other specialties. But we have made some progress with pathology, but that's still progress, given how stagnant that was, progress is the only thing for us. But a lot of the work that Kat has been doing has been working on locums to cover unexpected shortages elsewhere in the organization. I'm hoping, looking forward to when we can get her doing routine recruitment as opposed to managing relationships with local agencies.
She's also working on the anesthesia staffing agency.
Correct.
Dr. Martin, can you refresh me as far as the residencies go, our ability to attract such individuals who might have presented well and, and enjoyed the culture here?
We've been successful with the resident, well, with most of the residents we've targeted. In one case, the resident decided that the lifestyle that comes with working in urgent care was preferable to full-time primary care. We have recently interviewed a Yakima resident that has a strong interest in coming to Ellensburg. We will be having conversations with this year's graduating residents as well. One of them has already, yeah, she likes Ellensburg, it reminds her of home, home is Royal City. So that ship has sailed. But we get a good opportunity to get to know who we want to pursue.
On that, I know that I, with other recruitment options and things, I know I'm going to some of the like A College, American College of Obstetrics and Gynecology, also go to A Coop, which is the most of the osteopathic obstetrics and gynecology providers. And so hoping to be able to, to meet some of those people who are residents and things. And I'm sure we're doing that in other places too, but we are, because we should send Kat.
We should send Kat with Dr. Dawson.
That's planned.
I gotta ask, we're down one and a half work though, certain, so I'm gonna do?
Working in progress.
I am on the line. Okay, any other questions for Dr. Martin? Thank you very much, Dr. Martin. Okay, next up, we have our CFO Scott Olaf. Wes.
Yes. Before I give the November operations report, I want to talk about a couple of things that happened since the last board meeting. The board approved the issue of debt for the hospital for the surgery expansion. And we were able to conclude a $15 million debt transaction on the 29th of December. So we, Siemens was the lender, and they wired that $15 million to K V H on the 29th. We turned around and wired it over to the local government investment pool at the Sprecher's office on the 30th. And so we have funds for the surgery expansion. The interest rate on that long-term debt is 4.05%. It's for the first 10 years, it will reset in 10 years. So we have funds for that transaction, and those funds are all actually over earning now, they're over 3, 3 and 3/4% while till we sort of follow those funds down. The other thing that, that happened is that we, we sent in our application for 501(c)(3), a piece of research to be a not-for-profit that will be on the 14th of December with a letter to expedited review of that. I got a call from the IRS on the 22nd, about eight days later, saying that our request for expedited review was being denied. And so Kat and I sent some CDs of foreign trained doctors to the IRS. I said, you know, that's what we, we stated that in the letter why we wanted, even the, you know, the expedited review of this. And they said they would accept, they would look at those, the use of doctors in, and consider that. So we don't have a formal rejection of our request for expedited review and processing, but I have not heard that they are denying it now. So that was two fairly significant things that had happened from a financial perspective. Questions? Questions?
Thank you for the updates.
On the, if you'll start on page fifty-five on the stats, I'll be, try to be fairly brief. As you heard earlier, we've, we weren't quite as busy in November. It seems like a long time ago. And that's, and then that's there's nice view, you're right up on page days, but we're very, very busy with surgeries. Procedures and in the urgency department and in our clinics. So well in excess of our budget amounts. And that led to a positive revenue variance of about one point eight million dollars. So surgeries were up, visits were up, and then ER was very, very busy. So. Positive revenue variance for the month, we're year-to-date, our positive revenue variance is two point five million. We had some, you'll hear some of this in our budget discussion. We had significant negative variance in temporary labor, as Julie has mentioned. And with the excess temporary labor and other expense, negative expense variances, we have here over, but now expenses by one point nine million for the month. So we posted an operating loss of about fifty-three thousand dollars in November. Year-to-date, we're still positive at six point five million dollars. We're, we have some of the funds that we have cash on, cash reserves we have, we're starting to move there. Interest rates are up. We are investing those funds and so we had an operating revenue of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in November. And so we ended up with a slight net income for the month of. It's a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Year-to-date, we're at five million dollars of positive. Positive net income. So that is.
Cut our rehab visits are down a lot year-to-date.
Yes, they are.
That's just definitely.
That's happening.
That being said, we talked at finance, it has been impossible to hire there for the last couple of years, but it is time for us to start trying to meet that long-term vision and. And reading long reports about how they're recruiting.
Yeah.
Because there is, you know, again, there's no reason to keep them under down, but I think we, we need some attention.
Well, as Ron said, we were able to hire one and I think rehab visits would be also for therapists too. So if, hopefully we're starting to fix that. So I, I just want to, on page, we had a good, almost ten point five million dollars in receipts for the organization. Page fifty-seven, you can see we increased our days in the cancer sweep hall by about a day. And on this, on this graph with the cash and investments. This green revenue bonds, that is the LGIP pool of funds. So we have about ten million dollars in the LGIP pool on page fifty-seven. That will go up to fifty, by fifteen million dollars when that, when you see the December financial statements. And that fifteen million dollars represents about fifty days cash. For KDH. Any questions about November financial?
Just a pretty big dip on the operating income.
Yes.
From the last six months. And that's probably labor costs?
Labor and contract costs.
Hey?
Okay. And we also have a surplus equipment resolution and. That is, we are disposing of some infant warmers and things in our OB department. And so these are these other items that were listed in that or different, and that we're recommending these be retired and surplus.
Okay.
We have the wrong officer, so if you don't mind scratching out the wrong name.
That'll be me and John. Matt would like the infant warmer certain sleeping. I think we should just put our feet in them.
I'm getting worried that doesn't work.
So I would move to approve the resolution twenty-two dash fourteen.
Both by John?
Second.
Second by Erica? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then I'd like to talk a little bit about the budget and Jason Adler is here with us this evening and. Jason does a lot of. A lot of work with the budget. It's actually the whole team. But Jason meets with every senior leader and every manager of the organization. And this built budget is built from the bottom up. And as we look at volumes and expenses and it has. So it's, it's a collective effort. It's the, we started on preparation budget in August. And so this is the culmination of months and months of work on Jason's part and on his. Improved and more attributed. Areas of focus is KDH is striving to be the employer of choice in the market. And we're doing this through competitive compensation. We have made improvements to our benefits for full part-time employees. And we've, we have professional development opportunities for staff, for certification and other opportunities to encourage people to stay with KDH. That's, that is part of our, that we were putting in this budget. And obviously the financial sustainability and access to capital continues to be the pillars of what our goal was, an organization is. And the ability to borrow fifteen million dollars from Siemens at a very, very good interest rate demonstrates that. What was being accomplished. The. We are assuming there's, continues to be growth in this, in this budget as we go through the. I guess the working field, so we, we experience significant growth in the emergency department. And so we, the assumption is that we're going to continue to grow at the rate that we've seen it. There are indications that we see from the market, Yakima and struggles that they're having. To indicate that we're going to continue to see volume out of the Yakima area. We, with the, with the coming retirement of Dr. Mirich. We're. We looked at surgical volumes of both he and Dr. Longo. We believe that we've budgeted about thirty, thirty-seven orthopedic cases per month. We believe at this point that Dr. Longo will be able to pick up that, that volume. And that, as there are other orthopedic providers that are recruited or that is on. Just at a high level, just talk about the increases on inpatient. We've had a lot of growth in inpatient patient days. It will, will continue to grow, not at the rate that we've have experienced the last year. Will increase overall inpatient days by about three hundred and fifty-nine days. Our average daily census is going to increase from about eleven point five patients per day to seven point five. And it will have, we're anticipating about sixty-eight additional admissions. We've had a discussion about obstetrics and OB. We actually grew quite a bit this year. We, we think we're going to be right at about the same level as three hundred and twenty-two, three hundred and twenty deliveries in the coming year. We do see some in, some volume increases in surgery, both inpatient cases and outpatient cases. And then an increase in GI procedures. As I mentioned, we, we're going to, in two thousand twenty, we budgeted fourteen thousand ER visits. We're on. We're trending at fifteen thousand five hundred and twelve. I mean, we believe that, you know, we've seen the last four or five months that we'll increase that to one thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight ER visits. To a grand total of about sixteen thousand seven hundred and ninety, which is about forty-six patient, or forty-six visits per day. Lab is expected, lab and some of the imaging, particularly CT corresponds with ER volumes. So we're anticipating normal lab growth, but also some additional lab growth, lab and imaging growth related to emergency cardigan growth. And then we're with rehab visits, this is Dr. Aaron, as I've mentioned. We think we will get back to more of a normal level with rehab visits. We were actually down significantly, as you've seen in our stats. And overall clinic visits is expected to increase from about eighty-eight thousand visits to ninety thousand. And then we, we're still looking at additional programs that we may consider at the year. Those are not factored into the budget at this point. We, there's a potential expansion in cardiology, cardiology services, urology, pediatrics. But we don't have any provider signed, so we're looking at existing, the assumption is the existing providers that we have. Transplant existing providers. And then with. Jason budgets with, he uses only signed contracts of doctors as he projects visits and ancillary revenues. So to the degree we have signed contracts with providers that is tracked in the budget. We, with grant revenue, we've been able to receive fairly large grant awards in this, in this last year. We did not factor in grant awards into the budget. So we, we get. We forget paid grants, but we did not factor in some certain, something is the payer mix will stay the same as it is. Pretty good mix of commercial insurance and Medicare and Medicaid. Would be. Possible to, with the changes this year and changes coming up next year to attract charity care or is that, are you trying?
Okay.
Very closely.
So do we have it in our?
Yes, it's in the budget. It's.
Has changed this value effect? Was that?
The ones this year, the charity was four hundred percent this year.
Yeah.
Hopefully up to. It's immigrants is next year.
The, the charity care is financial assistance. We have, what, we're paying you on? I, I moved to page six, but it's, it's financial assistance is on, is on. It's about six lines down. We have tractials provision for bad debt and financial assistance. That is for our charity. And so we, we, even with, even with that increase in. The threshold to be eligible for charity, we've not seen it change much so far in the first, we have. And we've always been in a circle for six months.
Get worth to kind of separate that out and like, like some of the other graphs that we've seen, just see, or I don't know, more of me interested in that. Where it's hard to, if I'm looking at it, it's hard for me to kind of. You'll see it like.
It's, it's pretty typical in a doctor's report to see what's called uncompensated care.
Yeah.
And to look each month about bad debt and charity and those two, you know, are, are very, very similar. But yeah, that's, I mean, it's reported every month. So I don't think that's a, there's a lot of fear out there. Given the language, the legislation passed last year that we didn't see that skyrocket. I just, I couldn't remember the implementation base.
The, the new charity guidelines were started on first of July of last year. And there is some, an additional reporting, charity reporting requirements to the state, you know, where we actually list the individuals that. We provided charity to and, and we'll, we were going to provide quarterly reports related that we'd probably, you know, that's got detailed patient information. So that's more detailed. Probably want.
Would it be sufficient just to have sort of a standing request that if it changes dramatically, that's got, I just know, I mean, if it just sort of stays relatively constant?
Can I make a proposal because patient or payer mix really doesn't change if we were to pull out that breath and instead do.
Yeah.
Bad debt and charity. So we need to keep an eye on that.
Yeah.
We, we.
We fresh.
Yeah. We can also do it. You do with financials, what do you mean to, like, we could have more detailed.
Okay.
More detailed financial.
We could actually, we could probably be in more detail with that.
Yeah.
Depending from age, nation, that being.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have like a detailed one for other deductions. We do that line. So we could do that for the financials.
Your payer mix, I'm, I'd be okay with.
Of course, I'm about to say problematic rates. Like the way I just messed with your finance package, okay?
We are anticipating a, our payer contracts allow us to do a five, up to a five percent rate increase. And we're going to do the full five percent for hospital services. And then a three percent rate increase for professional services. This will generate about four point eight million dollars of additional revenue. Both will be receiving. We're assuming that there's no provider relief funding upcoming. Unless things change. And then one of the, we've not been able, you know, on that non-operating line of, we've reported, you know, very poor returns. And they've been unrealized losses, but very low returns. We are budgeting one point three million dollars of interest income for the organization.
If I percent increase for hospital services is mostly going to be felt by the insurance companies, correct?
Yeah. It's, it's felt by insurance companies and self-pay patients also.
Right. The self-pay is a pretty small percent.
Percent.
Yeah. I got it. Okay. Thank you.
Just salary, some wages, about sixty-five percent of our overall operating expenses. We have the, the new agreements with WSA and T Series factoring in. We have for wage increases. Overall wage increases for existing staff are about three million dollars. We have factored in, assume that we will hire an additional sixty-one of the staff members. And the. The cost for the additional staff members is on an annual basis about six point, six point million dollars. That's sixty-one FTEs, twenty-two are in clinics, thirty-nine are in patient care in hosp, or excuse me. Twenty-two in, twenty-two in the clinics, thirty-nine in the hospital and thirty-nine twenty-eight are in patient care areas. We, you've seen, heard from Vicki and Vicki's report that we're able to start to hire individuals. So we're trending at six million dollars in contract labor this year. We think that will be increased by three point two million. We factor in an eleven percent increase in. In our employee benefit costs or benefits. And that's primarily due to the rate increases with the PEP. We do not have a PEP liability increase or decrease in budget. It's a basically non-operating. Professional fees will decrease by about six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. That is where our locum and the expense to hire temporary physicians is. We've, just as Dr. Martin mentioned, we just hired Dr. Anderson, a pediatrician. We've been spending private money for pediatric locum providers and EMT locum providers. So we have Dr. Rogers in, joining EMT and Dr. Anderson. So we, overall, the decrease in professional services. Providers are expected to overall increase by one hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Utility expenses are, are going to. So you know, those rate increases are. So you know, those rate increases, our utilization of electricity is going down because of the, all these.
I'm going to say the lighting here is, is better.
So.
Yeah.
And the cost less of the light on too. When you get a grant, and we got a grant for it. And so, and then other energy saves. So there's going to be continued energy savings. Purchase services will decrease 2.6%. Appreciation is, is going to be increasing because of the work we've done with cafeteria and lab. Rent and leases is going down because we are, our strategy is to own and depreciate those assets as opposed to rent them. Interest expenses going up. So we are, we're significantly, the new monthly interest expense on the bonds. We're increasing travel and education 23%. That's part of employee retention and staff development. So that is, we have, we will spend on routine capital, anywhere from $4 million. These routine capital requests that will come to you for approval. One of the two items that are approved that we are spending this year is we'll spend $9,000 on the energy efficiency project. And the Pixis machines that we were leasing, I think approved to purchase about four, five months ago. Those are part of that $4 million that we'll spend. And then there's some other, a potential upgrade to Philips monitor, about a million dollars. But that will come to board for approval. And then we're anticipating spending from $8, $10 million on the expansion project this year. So the actual budget document is on page six of this amendment. Stats that build into that budget are on page seven. Jason, is there anything else that?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. On that temp labor, so we dropped it from 6 million to 39. There is also some assumption, some of that offset of that is it's in the salary. So I budget for the staff being employed, and I budget the differential cost for them, the agency stepping on the temp labor line. So how would be over budget on the temp labor? Either portion of that is in the salary. So we're not double budgeting that expenses. And then malpractice, so we still hadn't heard back from our malpractice insurer for a quote there. So if you have a good estimate for malpractice, maybe put with our insurance for that. And then we did have, let's see, about a 40% increase in the travel and education line. So that was in line with the, because the initiative was to invest more in staff. So I think all of staff feel appreciated that as an investment.
Total, total revenue budget is 233 million anticipated. Total expense portion of that budget is about 121 million. And we'll yield about an $8 million operating income. Non-operating earnings of $1.4 million. We'll take it up by 9.3 million dollars. Questions, we would be happy to answer anything that we can.
Questions?
I appreciate all the work that goes into this.
Yeah, a lot of it was, it's a judge. And it is impressive how much.
No, we appreciate all the work. I would like to make a comment about our net operating margin. I asked them to target about 6.2, and I didn't just pull that out of the air. Six, so if you look at the appreciation that we'll be putting through that income statement next year, that's about $4.5 billion. And that is at historical cost. So we know that healthcare inflation and equipment inflation runs about 8% to 9% year over year. So we don't have shareholders, we don't get bonuses for money that we make. What we're doing is providing for equipment replacement and for extension of services in the future. So as the organization gets larger, and we're still targeting about 6.2, that gets to be a larger and larger number. But as you heard Scott just say, we're spending four of that on equipment next year. So the fact that we've been able to do what we do and we have the cash reserves because this quarter and the quarters ahead for you have always been very conservative and, and responsible in terms of making sure that we'll provide them for future replacement.
But the growth over the last six years has been very impressive.
Yeah. So, so I guess what I'm saying is don't spend it all in one place. Or get it needed.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Any other questions or comments? I appreciate the thorough view of this, Scott, the great budget. So.
Any a motion?
Yeah, a motion to approve the 2023 operating budget.
I will move to approve the 2023 operating budget.
That makes a motion, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of approving the 2023 operating budget, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
There you go, Scott, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Well done.
Thank you.
And one additional item that I passed out, it was a, it's an architectural contract that, and it's, it's, it's not capital. But it was the, we're looking at our general surgery clinic, design it and bring it up to hospital, by the base of those requirements and standards. And this is just the design base of this. It is $143,600. And it will, it may lead, if the board, if you, it may lead to a capital request to estimate another $300 to $400 to actually do the renovation. This is, we did a, about three years ago, we did a cosmetic upgrade to the clinic carpet and paint. But there was no structural changes and no clean handling, cleaning. Sorry, I don't need to. Thank you. So this, this will be extensive potential renovation. But this, this is work that we believe needs to be done. And so this is, yes, a master, it's not capital.
No, it's more just to notice that this is on its way. The other project I highlighted, so it's Jim's point. We've, we've been working on, we know we need to do a remodel of the orthopedic suite, but we've kind of been hovering on it. We haven't, we've known this decision had Dr. Merrick's coming. So now that we know sort of who the players are going to be, we can expect that that project's really going to take off. They'll, they'll be hearing us talk about that pretty soon. They've been working on the schematics and, and the design, but they haven't been able to advance that because we weren't exactly sure who the players.
Well, let's do some of the exterior stuff too.
This one will, is just interior for the general surgery clinic, the orthopedic clinic. That, that, it's more with exterior and walkways and landscaping too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next up is the community relations report, Michelle World.
Michelle World on a Disney cruise somewhere in Disneyland or something.
All right, well, we have, we have her word here. And I'm sure she'd be happy to answer any questions by email when she returns.
I hope she's safe. She's at Disney World, this for Christmas. My daughter and husband and two grandchildren went to Disney World to play around. And all four of them caught COVID, even though they'd been vaccinated.
Okay, she gets it all. All right. So one piece of whole business. First, I just want to thank members of the SLT for giving your feedback for the CEO evaluation. Erica and I led that effort. We had a meeting with Julie last week. Julie's always open to, to this feedback, especially from her leadership team. Erica and I really appreciate the response, the written responses and also the meeting that you guys had with us. So thank you very much for that. We had a good constructive meeting with Julie. Erica, you have anything to add?
I, I also thought it was very productive, very forward-thinking. I appreciate the collaboration and goodwill from everybody during the process. And I think that it was a good, good experience and reaffirmed that we've got an excellent CEO. I'm very grateful for that. I think that this is a synergy of really great leadership in this organization, Julie and beyond. So thank you to everybody.
How great is she yet?
That's confidence. It's a past spell nowadays. Yeah, that's true. She's still here, so that's, that's something.
Julie Peterson and Julie Hopkins.
The only other thing that I'll mention really quickly is that I had mentioned in a previous meeting something that I had suggested, that is changing the title of the person who sits here into board chair as opposed to board president. I thought that it better reflected what my job actually is. Since we all have, you know, no one person on the board speaks for the board. It's, it's just, and, and the voice of the president is worse no more than the voice of any other or board member. We always only, they do actions as a group, et cetera, et cetera. So really, the job of the board president is to chair meetings. However, I find out, Julie tells me that there's an RCW that says board president. So.
Still going to be the president.
Yeah, it's still going to be the president. But, you know, hopefully you all know that we only act as a board as a whole and that, and that the person who sits here doesn't have any more power than any other member of the board. Really, all the president does is chair the meetings and sometimes kind of speak on behalf of the board. But whenever that happens, it's always a consultation with the other commissioners. So anyway, we remain president due to the RCW, but I just want to remind everybody about, about that.
I'm respectful we don't have a Speaker of the House that we.
Well, I was wondering. Anyway, so I'm glad that you're the president of the chair. Yeah, I preside over the chair. Okay, so it's quarter eight. Julie, how long do we need in executive session?
I would suggest maybe 20 minutes.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's take a five-minute break.
Amanda, are you going to stay with us?
Five-minute break until 7:50. And so let's say, reconvene at half hour of executive session. Let's say 8:15, just to, just to wait. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming. I assume, but I don't have one. I assume there's one being produced. I came in early.
That's the main question, obviously.
I know it's you, Joel. I know I was laughing at you.
Oh, we've got a second, my second.
Yeah. Can you tell that there's nobody else?
Yeah, I can make sure.
All right. There we are, man.
Thank you, Nikki.
Just curious.
Yeah. Working on the meeting all. Yeah. Yeah. Thank God, that was wonderful. Amazing how.